The recording is ongoing and we have no one online yet.
I would like to call to order the planning commission meeting of June 6, 2023. Well, Sheena, will you please read the roll call?
What's here?
Here.
Anderson? Anderson?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Thank you. Has everyone read the minutes and if they have, do they want to add any corrections or additions? Okay, none?
I don't have my mic, but there is one correction on the very last page where it says commissioned meeting in turn by commission, it really should say commissioner.
Thank you. Noted. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Second.
Second, been moved to second and to approve the minutes as corrected. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, code date update, code update workshop.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be us.
Thank you Chair and fellow commissioners. So just as a reminder, this is a workshop, so we're here to talk about some code updates. And Chair, I wasn't sure if you wanted me to go through these issue at a time and then stop and talk about it? Or if you want me to plow through the presentation and then circle back to stuff?
Well, it would be the pleasure.
I don't think we need to hit on anything or everything.
So you want to plow through?
Okay.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions and I know where they are, so.
All right, well, you know, I'll stop at the end of each item then and just ask quickly if there's any comments on that.
That works.
We'll go forward that way, that works. So we continually track the development, the development of our code as it goes along and we try to figure out where it's working and where it's not working. And we keep a running list of things that need to be revised. And then once we kind of get a critical mass of those small honeydew list fixes, then we bring it forward to you as one giant change happens to be that's happening annually because last time we did this was a calendar year ago. That's not by design, it's just coincidental. But we have a lot of small changes to bring to you today and that's what we're talking about. So in this code update, there are generally three categories of changes that we're talking about. First, we're going through the climate friendly and equitable communities. You're probably saying, what the heck is that? And I'll tell you in just a minute. We'll go through that. Then we have some general text updates to our code. And then we have some map changes. You might notice on here it says three map changes and you're going, wait a minute, Matt. We only saw two in the thing you sent us earlier. True, we've added one since we sent this out to you folks and we'll talk about that at the end. And I'll show you exactly what we're thinking about doing and get some feedback from you. Oh, how about it? You bet. Kevin has an announcement that I seem to have glossed over.
So you probably noticed we have someone sitting here new at the DIAS, Alan Sorum. So of course, if you have been to a meeting, Forrest Pliss, Mike and Harry. So his last day is the third. And the city has selected Alan Sorum and his firm.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So Alan will be working with us. Alan brings a lot of experience. I've worked with a number of land use issues. And we've worked with others from his firm over the last three, four years in areas of foresting, additional systems. So Alan is, and their team is onboard now. So you'll see Alan in the uh, the planning commission that has stuff going on and the council meetings. So you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you. And I will note on my team as well is a woman who'll be here maybe in a couple of months to cover from one meeting while I'm gone. Her name is Margaret Ganderbo. Margaret's been with us. This is her seventh year and she's also experienced in land use as well. So thank you, Kevin, for that introduction and we're really happy to be here. As Kevin noted, there's been a lot of land use activity going on with industrial projects off industrial, transition Parkway. And just happy to be here, joining the team.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Let me just say one thing. So we originally, when we were doing some work, Alan was on the other side of us. And that's how I got to know Alan now, and he's very professional and very knowledgeable. He has a very good reputation. And then we started with some very comprehensive land use issues here, developments and the company. And so I reached out to Alan and said, can we get hired by here in particular, if he was his firm to help us? He's been great and they're helping us on a number of issues. So I personally feel very good. I've always had been concerned about actually hiring someone to get popping in. And I've been stood on behind five years. And so Alan just really stepped in. I think it just, I think it takes the city up to the next level. When I started here, we had 700 people in the city. And I was 30 years old, 200 people. So it's just awesome. I think that Alan's firm, Alan and his firm, he didn't see, as the city grows, they have expertise. So I'm just really happy.
Thank you, Forrest.
But last thing, we spent a ton of work with you. I really have enjoyed it. We're all in family. I want to be able to be in the state.
I also didn't introduce our new planning commissioner. We kind of got that done before the microphones were turned on. But officially, we have Alex joining us here too as a new planning commissioner. So thank you for joining the team. Hope it's going to be an adventure for you. And then while we're doing housekeeping, this is Ann's last meeting. And so she's not going to be here for the next one. So the next one, like we talked about off the microphone, we'll have to elect a new chair at the next meeting. But we're not going to do that tonight because we are missing three people. All right, back into this. So the first changes we're going to talk about have a funny name, climate friendly and equitable communities changes. And the state went through a process where they wanted to address issues with housing and issues with equity and the changing climate. And so they kind of wrapped all that into one and did a lot of state level changes called climate friendly and equitable communities. Horrible name, horrible changes. We fought them vehemently from the city level. We feel like they really reached down from Mount Olympus and forced cities to do things they don't want to do. They take away a lot of our sovereign jurisdiction that we have here in cities. But at this point, despite the fact that we fought them, we lost and now we have to comply with them. Generally speaking, in a quick nutshell, if your city has over 5,000 people in it, which we don't, if your city has over 5,000 people, you have to designate climate friendly areas, which is an area that has to be built up to be a mixed use style area where people can easily walk to and from their places of employment and stores and things like that. And it has to have transit plugged into it as well so that they can easily go to other places if they need to. And the state feels that by doing that, it's going to have people not need their cars as much. And therefore it will address the climate problems. Whether or not it's going to work, I won't get into it. I'll stand off my soapbox. But if your city is under 5,000 people, there are still some changes you have to make. And that's specific to parking requirements. And so that's what we're talking about here today. And we actually brought some of these changes to the planning commission back in November and said, do you guys want to go ahead and change some things now in our code? Because they're going to take effect at the state level in January. Or we could not deal with them back then and just have the state's new rules supersede ours in January. The planning commission said, let's just put it off. It's nothing important. We'll let the state's rules trump ours for a little while and that's okay. And but now since we're doing the larger collective global update, I figured this is a great time to bring those back. We did have some of the rules go into effect on January 1 at the state level. And so those are in effect now whether our code acknowledges them or not. But this does acknowledge those and there was different timing triggers. There were some things that were required by January. There are some things that are required by later on this year. These changes we're proposing here tonight are going to get us all caught up for what happened in January and what's supposed to be happening by the end of the year. So a lot of these changes we're talking about were state mandated. I didn't embellish on them or go above and beyond what the state was requiring. Basically, what you're seeing here is the bare minimum that we needed to do in order to comply with the state's laws. And they've basically got them clustered into three different sections. They want us to remove parking mandates and I'll explain what that means here in just a moment. Address some changes in parking regulations and then add a requirement for electric vehicle charging capacities. And they're very specific about that too. And so we're going to talk about each one of those. But the first one, remove parking mandates, they're basically saying that we're not allowed anymore to say how many parking spaces are needed based on your use. And if you go into our code today, it has a table that says exactly how many parking spaces are needed based on what you have. If it's a bowling alley, you need one space for each lane. If it's a restaurant, you need a spot for each table, that kind of thing. And those are all going to go away. At this point, applicants will identify how many parking spaces they're going to need. Now, we're not all that concerned with this moving forward at the management level. And I'll tell you why. It's because I think capitalism is going to step in and fix a lot of this for us. If Best Buy comes in and Best Buy decides they need 500 spaces, then Best Buy is going to build 500 spaces. You might get a restaurant coming in that might underpark. And if they came in and had two parking spaces, we, the city, couldn't say we require more. But that restaurant probably wouldn't survive because they don't have enough parking. So it's not going to be the catastrophic thing that some people think it's going to be. The one place I think it really will have a big impact is in multifamily housing. And that's because multifamily developers have a real propensity to underpark their projects. And the state actually applauds them for that because the state thinks if you underpark it, they'll just buy a bike instead and they won't ride, drive cars anymore. We all know that's not the reality. They're going to have 12 cars for each apartment because all their kids are driving and there will be no place to park. And that will burden out onto the rest of the community. But we're not that concerned with that because we don't have a lot of multifamily housing coming into the city at this time. So we don't think this is going to be a real problem for us, despite the fact that we couldn't change it anyway. Now, this does say that we're allowed to keep our parking standards. So each space has to be nine by 20. You have to have landscaping in there every 11 spaces. All those kinds of rules, aisle width, those all get to stay. So if they do decide to build parking, it's not a free for all. We still have standards for how they build it. And that's not changing. Well, they're changing parts of it, but not, nothing significant to the size of the spaces. So most of the parking mandates that we had were in table 14. A small portion of that's here on the screen, but you can see as we proposed it in the red line strikeouts, we're just getting rid of the whole table. There were a few other places that mentioned parking requirements, like caretakers' units required a certain number of parking spaces. RV parks had a certain number of parking spaces. So there are some other surgical edits throughout where we had to address that. But we've now removed all mandatory parking requirements. And I'll stop at the end of the C-FEC stuff for any questions. So the next one up was parking regulations. Most of these stay the same. There are three changes that pertain to parking lot standards. One of them talks about a requirement for canopy shade. I have here 50, the text you had in front of you said 50% of the lot had to be covered in a shade canopy. Alan pointed out to me earlier today that the rule is actually 40 because they changed that after these were adopted. And so I'm going to make sure to go through the latest version of the climate friendly and equitable communities and make sure that all of our stuff is consistent with that. But this provision is still in there. It's just 40 instead of 50. So that's still something we're going to have to address. Next, the state is mandating that we add carpool and vanpool preferred spaces for businesses. And that's been added to this code as well. And last, there's an odd one that says that we have to allow redevelopment of existing parking lots, but only for additional bus stops or bike parking. So if somebody today has a large lot and wants to put a fast food restaurant on it, this would allow us to say, no, you can't do that because those parking spaces were required under the code previously. But if they want to do a bus station or bike parking, we have to let them do it. A little bit odd, but now our code reflects that. Okay, so that's climate friendly and equitable communities in a nutshell. That's probably about half the changes that you had in front of you. I'll stop now and ask if there was any questions or concerns on that. Okay, fire away.
60. 3, 360. The one here, basically, it says all bike parking spaces should include outlets for electrical bicycle and scooter charging. I don't think, now, before I get into any explanation, do we have any wiggle room on that or is this something that has to be done?
The latter. Yeah, these are part of the state mandated requirements.
This is just, I think, promoting homelessness. Plus, we're putting a burden on the business owner that he's either going to have to turn off his plug when he shuts down or he's going to end up paying for people just wandering by, charging whatever they want to. Now, this would be very much akin to putting a gasoline dispensing facility for each parking space.
Yeah, that's very true. Well, I don't think there's anything in the code that says they couldn't add timers to those to turn on and off at the end of the night, something like that.
What I'm saying is that I think this is going to maybe stifle some of the commercial people that we might have coming in if they have to end up with this. Because now all of a sudden, and why in the world should a business person be responsible for a person to charge their bicycle or scooter?
Well, there's also a code requirement now that when a new business comes in, they have to add conduit for vehicle charging stations as well. They don't have to add the chargers, but they have to add the conduit when the parking lot is constructed. That's one of the changes the state's making us do too. So they're just trying to give people more transportation alternatives is what they say. I'm not arguing with anything you said for sure. I think it could promote more homelessness and it could be a burden on businesses. But whether or not businesses flourish seems to be the last thing on the state's mind, ever.
So to clarify then, the there's a business owner and does he have to have any bicycle, scooter parking? And he is, he, she, they are responsible for that.
Electrifying that spot now.
Electrifying that spot. And paying.
Correct. No, I don't think this actually says it has to be made available to the public. So maybe this is an employee bikes parking space inside the building that has an outlet. That might be one way you can address it. This doesn't say it has to be available to the public.
Why wouldn't it be?
I'm just thinking of ways we can address it.
You're not going to ride your bicycle around inside the store.
Well, no, but you might ride an electric bike to work, plug it in, work your shift, then ride it home. And there's value in that.
Matt? So I'm looking at your kind of this page with the
Okay.
recording and such. Am I reading this right in thinking you've identified rule 400 subsection 3 as the source of the bike parking section? Or am I not reading?
No, 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 the table, on this table, on the left-hand column, that's just the section of our code that it's actually changing. Of our code. It's not stating the, which section of the state's code that's coming from.
So which rule is that? In the state, states.
I don't have that written down here. That's back in my notes at my desk. I'd have to find that.
Yeah, let's, let's just double check that.
For certain, for certain.
Just because as you indicated, there were some changes between when they published the advisory guides and the initial rules late last year.
Yeah, sure.
And, and, and this one, so.
Yeah, all the, all the C-FEC changes that I made, I made with the very first blush draft of the rules that came out from the state. And as Alan pointed out, they've changed that since. I didn't think the changes were quite that extensive, but I certainly need to go through them and make sure they're still applicable. And I won't add anything the state's not requiring us to from that perspective. So if the state has changed this one, see, then I'll certainly go back and alter that.
So if, if business owners have the ability to determine how many spots they need, they could say they don't need any bicycle spots.
Vehicle parking is optional, bicycle is not.
Okay, okay, because I had read, where was it? That there was no minimum.
Well, for vehicles, you're still required to have bicycle parking spaces.
Is that for every commercial facility? Or let's say across the street, we put in a strip mall that has about four or five different. Those guys can get together and put in one or two for the entire place?
Correct. It would be for the shopping center in that case. Or if you, if ATI were to come in brand new today, then they would have to add that for their workers as well. But they wouldn't have to add it in every building. They could just add right there at the front for their project. Because the idea is that it helps the public who are interfacing and it helps the employees who are going there as well.
Can a business owner charge for the electricity?
I don't know. That's a good question.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
Can a business owner meter it and charge for the electricity?
Oh.
I don't know the answer to that. That's a good question. I don't think it addresses it, so I don't see any reason why they couldn't. If our code doesn't speak to it, then they could. If we don't specifically say they can't.
Can we add that in? At the option of the business owner?
I don't think that'd be a problem.
That would give the business owner a little bit of flexibility.
You know what I can do? I can A, go through the code and make sure that this is still consistent with what they're requiring. And B, I can bounce that idea off of the DLCD, who are the gatekeepers of the C-FEC.
From a drafting standpoint though, like you typically, you're writing out what is prohibited and then what might be mandated as well. And as Matt says, if, if, if it's not, you know, a version of it, because like the electric parking and stuff. I mean, you go and you, they have those publicly available right now. Almost all of those, they're not free. You go to the, the library and they have, you have to be, you have to pay in order to, to use the electricity. So that's, that's kind of the baseline. So I don't think, you know, we may want to add that as a clarifying, but you know, sometimes from a drafting standpoint, too much, you say too much on a topic, you end up creating unexpected things. So you know, I think go ahead, do the research and then we can look at it and see if it requires additional clarification or not. But we wouldn't necessarily want to write in all the rules and regulations. We would want to leave that up to the property owner.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on climate friendly?
Couple more.
You bet.
33080. Number nine, car and vanpool parking. Is there any employee headcount required for vanpool or parking?
No, they very specifically decided not to put something like that in. They, the state, during the process.
So it's required? If you've got two people?
And two parking spaces for that business, yeah.
And there's no wiggle room with this?
Well, they could not have any parking at all and then it's not required. But the minute you have spaces, you have to add these.
And the number 11? I looked up ORS 455.417 and the percentage that they want is 20%, not 40%.
Oh, well, maybe that's another thing that just needed to be updated when they updated the code. I'll certainly look into that. Okay. Got it. I made that note here.
I really disagree with the electric vehicle thing. I strenuously disagree with it. I mean, I can, there's some facts I can throw at you. I mean, J.D. Powers, who everybody seems to like to quote, says there are 250 million cars in the United States. Less than 1% of those cars are electric. Now, in Oregon, there are 1.3 million registered cars in Oregon. 1% of that is 13,000 cars. And I don't think 13,000 cars statewide mandates us to do this personally. I just can't see it. I mean, it's, it's a waste of time.
The first version of the state's code for this actually required full-blown chargers at all of them. And then there was a lot of discussion about what this is going to do to businesses. And they said, this is going to chase businesses away. Nobody's going to build if you're going to require thousands and thousands of dollars for electric vehicle chargers. And so they kind of tapered back from that to what they have now as a compromise, which is just run the conduit so that if and when the money is there, maybe a grant, maybe the state's paying for it, at least the most difficult part, the conduit will already be there. They wouldn't have to rip up the parking lot that was already built. Was there thought process through that? But I hear what you're saying.
That's that's just my take on it. I mean, I don't, if we don't have any choice, we don't have any choice. But it's, I mean, we should, we need to start pushing back on some of this stuff.
I think they're trying to anticipate also what may be coming. And that's more electrical.
Well, I, I agree, there are going to be people that buy electric cars. But it's just going to be golf cart range. I mean, you're not going to travel from here to Sacramento in an electric car. Unless you absolutely have to, you're not going to make it.
Well, they've been mandating specific distances for charging stations. So you might be able to go to Sacramento at that time.
California has already outlawed new gas cars past what?
30.
Yeah, 2030?
Well, they don't have the infrastructure.
No, no, they sure don't.
To charge these. Now, I don't know exactly where it was, but it might be in this area with the multifamily.
Chargers.
Place is now charged. I think we should mandate that they require those chargers to be outside, not inside the facility because they do have a tendency to explode. And that would be a serious safety disadvantage to living in an apartment that has three of these chargers down in the basement. And one of them explodes and takes down the whole place. But that's, again, I don't know if we have any pushback on any of that. But I saw that there, that they're requiring the multifamily places to have electric charging facilities. And I think they should be mandated to be outdoors.
What about Doug, would those carports qualify as outdoors or indoors? You've seen some of those apartments have those carport covers, right?
Right, right, I understand. How about not in the building that is the residence?
Not in the habitable space.
A carport is usually external. Anyways, so that's.
I don't know the answer to that one. I'll bounce that one off the DLCD too.
I just have one more thought on this. Percentage of the parking places that need to have cover. Who does the inspections on those? They're supposed to be inspected every 15 years. Obviously, we're coming up on 30 years. There should have been an inspection 15 years ago and again now, if, since the, since the city has been incorporated.
Well.
Just saying, whose responsibility is it to do the inspections?
A lot of these development standards are standards that we, the planning commission here, have to check for every time a new project is approved. After that, if somebody doesn't comply with the development standards anymore, it's really a code enforcement issue. We would have to say, these were a requirement of your project. You're no longer requiring, you're no longer implementing it. You need to fix it. This happens a lot for us with landscaping businesses where they've just let landscaping fall apart. And we contact them and say, listen, this was a requirement of the project. You have to keep it planted, blah, blah, blah. And we go back that way. But we wouldn't have a program for active inspections to make sure that the tree was providing the canopy. They just had to, at the design stage, show us that whatever tree they chose for their parking lot has the ability to be 50% coverage in 15 years.
But, well, 40% now.
40%, 40%, yeah.
But the point being is that that requirement doesn't hit until the 15-year mark. The way I read it anyways, is that you plant these things and at 15 years, they have to meet a 40% coverage.
Right, right. I think all that really means that when they actually show us the landscape plan at the site development review stage, they have to show us that that tree is capable of this kind of crown. And it should hit that at 15 years. And when you add all the trees up, that's going to be over 50%. You're good, you're done. I mean, if they pulled the trees out and just bulldozed them after that, it would become a code enforcement issue. We'd tell them, you had to have those trees. Yeah.
But there's, there's no plan for that like there is to check our back flows every year.
No, no, there certainly isn't. Matter of fact, if it's a code enforcement issue, No, no, there certainly isn't. Matter of fact, i- if, if it's a code enforcement issue, we are a complaint driven code enforcement city. So we wouldn't go out and actively, uh, police those kinds of situations. We'd have to have somebody complain and then we would go, uh, do something about it. Same thing with landscaping in front of a business. We, we generally don't go after them unless somebody complains about it and then we'll go do something about it.
Well, that, that's about it then.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that part? On the climate friendly stuff?
Okay, one clarifying question, Matt, on bike parking. What, what uses trigger bike parking? So we've got the standards, like, you know, it, it says here how, how big it has to be. We've talked about, you might have to have an electrical.
Right, right.
But not every use triggers bicycle parking. Am I, am I right? I mean.
I'd have to go look. I don't have that committed to memory, but, um, yeah, there's.
Typically like multifamily uses, I think in, in the climate friendly stuff require that we do, that we require that. We're not, as you indicated, we're not seeing a lot of it. So, but it's not that, for example, someone who's coming in for a single family residential home. Isn't. You're not reviewing the subdivision plan, making sure that every lot has a bike parking spot.
Well, we would at the site development review stage though, when they came in for their actual.
For their private residence?
Oh, if it's multifamily.
No, no. I'm just saying like, as an example, for a private residence.
Okay.
You know, people, homeowners aren't required to have bike parking for their private residence. So I'm not sure what other uses. Require bike parking as a, as a minimum or not. It looks like that part wasn't getting changed. So whatever we historically was triggering bike parking.
Right.
Is there, but I just kind of wanted to make the point that. It's not, it's not as if every house is going to need to. New, new homes aren't being required to have.
Right.
Uh, electric charging ports outside for their bike parking. That's, that's not the mandate.
Right, yeah, right. Correct, correct.
That, that would be triggered by basically if you have a parking lot, right?
Well, that, that's my question. I'm not, I know that if you're doing multifamily, you, the, the state laws require you to have to provide for. For bike parking and then some jurisdictions differ as to retail, office, industrial. You know, then based on the number of employees, they might have varying bike parking requirements. And I didn't see those triggers getting changed here. So. I was just trying to, I was just trying to connect the dots with that concept.
Okay.
So that it's, if, if you are being mandated to have a parking space. You know, the, these are the requirements for, but we're not changing what types of uses are, are going to be required to have that.
I think based on the new rules from CFAC, anything that requires a site development review. Or any kind of land use permit, single family homes don't require a land use permit. Um, then they would be required to have some degree of bike parking, but I'll have to go back and.
Yeah, let, let's look at that. I, I wasn't sure. And I, I mean, that might be the, the case. It's, it's kind of complicated.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a look.
But it's not how it historically has been, but that's if, if the state, as he says, trumping these things.
And that was one of the things that came up from a lot of the jurisdictions when, when the state was going through this, the rulemaking process. They said, well, most cities have bike parking requirements based on how many parking spaces are required. So you, if you have twenty bike, or twenty vehicle parking spaces, then you need to have two bike parking spaces for every twenty vehicles. But if you've got rid of the parking mandates, how in the world do you park bicycles anymore? And so that was one of the things they talked a lot about, and that's why I think the version that they came up with in CFAC did get more specific as to when bike parking was required. Because they were trying to sidestep that one landmine in most cities' codes. And so I'll have to go back and take a look at how exactly we walked that line.
Yeah, cause three point zero three point sixty, that, that talks about the dimensions, locations, all those things. It doesn't talk about triggering. So let's just, let's just double check that.
I got that on my notes here. We'll take a look.
Okay.
Make sure that works.
Matt, is, is it your sense that a lot of the jurisdictions are, are? Not happy with a lot of this stuff? And, and, and do you have a, a, a venue to?
It's not a mystery. It's exactly like you think it would be. Bend, Eugene, uh, and Springfield absolutely love these concepts. And they're throwing down roses and going ten steps further. And they think this is fantastic. Um, a lot of the smaller jurisdictions absolutely can't stand it whatsoever. And they fought it as much as they could, us included. Um, but there's only so much firepower we have as a small city. And the League of Oregon Cities for Climate Friendly and Equal Communities didn't really stand in front of the bus force like we thought they should have. Matter of fact, Kevin and I brought them in here and had a meeting with them discussing how disappointed we were in our representation that we got from them during this process. Because they were just trying to alter it a little bit to make it more palatable. They weren't saying, here's the line of the sand and you're going way too far. And a couple jurisdictions did sue the state over climate friendly and equal communities. And the roster of cities who jumped on that was quite large, actually. Uh, some even in the Portland metro area, because not all of them love this concept. Some of them really hated it as well. And that lawsuit's still pending, but I don't think it's anticipated to do much. I don't know if you're following that.
I am not.
Okay, alright. We'll wait and see what happens and then we'll react. But, uh, yeah, a lot of cities were very upset about this and didn't seem to matter. And. Like, I could keep going, but. But I won't. Okay, so is that it for climate friendly and equal communities, as pleasant as that is? We don't like climate friendly and equal communities at all. Not even a little bit. So we gotta do, we gotta do. Alright. So moving on then, these are the text updates that we have noticed, uh, that needed some slight tweaking. Uh, as we were going through our just implementation of the code. And I'll start here, uh, at number nineteen, which is definitions, uh, changes that we're proposing to make. And, uh, one of those is for daycare. And this is just something we were trying to clean up because there was a loophole in our code. Where somebody came to us and said, well, we want to buy a house and run a daycare business out of it, but we don't want to live there at all. It'll just be for daycare and otherwise be empty. Is that okay? And we didn't want to allow that, but we went through our code and yeah, the code allowed that. And so this is kind of closing that loophole. And it's saying that daycare has to be owner occupied. And so that's why we've changed the definition to make sure that someone has to actually live in that house to make sure that it's cared for like a house should be in a community. The next one, um.
One thing, what does the ADUs revise to allow at duplexes?
Well, that, I was just going to go into that one. Um, right now, the, the, we've revised the definition of a duplex. Because there was a loophole that basically said if you had a duplex, you weren't allowed to have an ADU. And that actually made us inconsistent with state law. So we fixed that now. So if somebody had a duplex, they would be allowed to build an ADU for that duplex. And that was just a loophole we noticed fairly recently. And so we're just trying to fix that. That's the easiest way to fix it. We'll talk more about accessory dwelling units in a moment. So land use expirations, our code wasn't very clear as to how long a vacated business could sit before its previous land use approval was no longer valid. And so you could have, um, we had our nursery down here on Old Salem next to the storage unit. That sat vacant for a long, 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 long time. And our code wasn't really clear about if somebody else came in there and wanted to operate a nursery. Would they have to get a land use approval? It's been vacant for a long time, had a nursery land use approval at one point, but didn't anymore. So this clarifies this and put a one year timestamp on it. That one year is, I admit openly, a little bit arbitrary, uh, that maybe two is the right number, maybe five is the right number. I'm not sure. But we plugged one in here just to give us a starting point for conversations. And we wanted to be sensitive to people, especially here in Millersburg, who have put a lot of money into the infrastructure for a business. And so we put an out in here that specifically says the city manager can waive this provision. Uh, if they think it's too onerous. And specifically what we mean is what if ATI went out of business? And that plant sat there for five years, but then somebody else came in and wanted to restart that plant up. If we made them go through a whole brand new land use planning process, that plant might not even be able to get built there. Because the land use codes have changed so much since ATI was originally there. So the example we give in our code change here, it leans towards infrastructure provisions, but it doesn't limit the city manager to use that as the only criteria. The city manager has the ability to waive this for anything that he thinks is appropriate for the city. But it clarifies, um, when things go under. And so if you had a fast food restaurant across the street and it went out of business and it sat for more than a year. If somebody else came in there and wanted to run a, um, another business out of it, they wanted to sell yarn, they'd have to come in and get a land use approval. Even if they wanted to come in there and open up a fast food business, they would have to come in here and get a land use approval. Now you might say, what's the value in that? Codes change. Um, we want to make sure that we're reflecting that, uh, as it goes along. And the new business has to then comply with whatever rules has changed since that. Use our example, fast food restaurant was originally built. Maybe it was built fifty years ago. It doesn't remotely meet our standards anymore. Well, that would give us an opportunity to get all that fixed and make sure it meets our standards.
What about, um, construction? In other words, uh.
That's.
Like that. Place down the road. That's been. Occupied and vacant and, and someone's fixing it up now.
The burned down gym.
Yeah, and it's, and it's been a long time.
That's a different question. Um, when a land use approval is exercised is a different question. And it's actually the next section of the code. Um, and I'm not proposing any changes to it. Uh, but we do have a section that specifically addresses that. And it's a little bit gray on purpose. Because sometimes we want to give people longer to actually build out that project. But our code does have a section that specifically addresses that. And generally, it's what we call sticks in the air. They have to have building permit approval, have to have it graded. Um, they have to have something coming out of the ground, uh, before that. A land use permit expiration date comes into play. But most of our land use expiration dates that we have, that's standard in all of our projects, is just a land use, uh, expiration date for them to start building it. That's it. It doesn't say how many years they can operate that business. Um, we normally don't put time limits on businesses. Sometimes with conditional use permits, we would add a lifespan, but it's very rare. Um, but sometimes that happens. And so, does this answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Matt, so you've got land use permits, it's kind of capitalized here. What's, what's the meaning of land use permits in this person?
Uh, land use entitlements, uh, anything but building permits. Site development reviews, conditional use permits.
So like, I mean, one land division, if you construed by some, it's, it's land use permit. But. We wouldn't, we would not be vacating a plat.
No, no. Yeah, that runs.
So it couldn't, it couldn't entail that. That would run us in, in contravention state law.
You're right. Don't pay too much attention to the way that's written there because what you're reading is the non-conforming section. Non-conforming section wouldn't apply to a subdivision. Subdivisions aren't non-conforming.
So this is, yeah, so ta- talk a little bit about the context that this section.
Well, that's our legal non-conforming use section. And so it's, it clarifies when a use is legal non-conforming. Now you might say, what the heck is legal non-conforming? Well, what that means is that somebody has a permit to operate that, but over time, it no longer complies with our codes. Um, say somebody's operating, uh, we'll go back to our fast food example. When it was built, there weren't any setback requirements. So it's built right on the property line. But now we have a five foot setback requirement for a fast food restaurant. Well, that's a legal non-conforming element of that provision. And, uh, it can go to uses too. Somebody has, somebody instead of operating a, a fast food restaurant across the street, they're operating a junkyard. It's not too far fetched. We've got one down the street. And, um, that was allowed back then in the zoning code, but the zoning codes have since changed. It's no longer allowed. And so legal non-conforming use says how he can grow that business. How big can he, how much bigger can he make the junkyard before he's violating something? What can he do with that use? Before it's triggering the need to do a new land use review and therefore he couldn't do it anymore because junkyards are no longer allowed in that zone. That's the section that we're talking about for legal non-conforming. And so this is just adding another layer onto that cake to be more specific as to when a vacated use is just no longer good anymore. And it's really to protect the city because a lot of times when people vacate a use and, and leave it, it starts to deteriorate to the point where we feel. It should be improved to meet our standards. And with this protection on here, you couldn't have somebody buy the property for next to nothing. And then operate a ramshackle business that would be a safety hazard. Or even a detriment to our economic development in the city because it looks like terrible. This would require them to bring it up to code and land use codes specifically. That's something, you know, we have to, uh, conform to all of our design requirements as well.
So Matt, question, is that this section, land use expiration, the three twenty one one ten, intended to only apply to non-conforming uses? Because it's, that's not the way it's structured in the code here.
Well, I think what, well, we could change how it's sitting in there, but yeah, that was my idea.
That was the intent.
That would then apply not just to non-conforming uses, because once the use sat for more than a year, it becomes non-conforming. Well, no, I guess that's not what I'm trying to say. I'm trying to say it expires. So you're thinking it should be a different section.
Well, I, I think you've got it as a different section. It's separate from non-conforming. It follows it in the, the code, but it's not part, it's not under non-conforming. It's its own section.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify. So the, the no use for operation may commence on the property until all new land use permits are obtained, even if the use is identical. So this does, it doesn't matter if there's, the code has changed and there's setbacks or different, or things have changed, regardless if it's been more than a year.
Oh, no, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that's true. That's true.
They've got to go back through land use.
Right.
And I don't know how that plays into the subdivision section Alan was talking about, but when they've exercised and recorded a plat, that's done.
Oh, I see. So you're saying the title of this section could be problematic because it says land use.
Yeah, it's not part of, we're not amending, adding a new section to three point twenty one one hundred, non-conforming uses.
Yeah, it's a new standard.
Which already has a discontinuation provision saying all.
Yeah, but it wasn't clear.
Non-conforming uses discontinued for more than a year, you know, so.
Right, this is expanding that.
This is something.
Right, it's expanding that idea to if your use is vacant for more than a year, it expires.
But what one.
We, we've always considered a subdivision exercise.
Subdivisions are different.
When they've got, put in their infrastructure and recorded.
So that, this section is titled land use expirations. A subdivision isn't the land use. It's, it's a land division.
Well, it's defined as a land, it's defined as a technically limited land use decision. I think we need to define land use permit.
We can do that.
A little, you know, a little bit, you know, what are we, what are we trying to pick up? What are we trying to exclude any examples? So we, so we've got a, a definition of that. So we understand which permits. Because if, if I'm not, you know, staying with the subdivision and the single family residential, right, which is most of the community by Grove's area. Those uses are permitted by a subdivision, which, once you approve. You know, it can be valid up to ten years and that, that, that's all regulation on its own. We're not trying to touch that.
No, 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 no.
Single family homes are now right permitted use and you don't go through site plan review. So you don't have any land use entitlements to do that.
Correct.
That we're not touching most of the, the community. So in the commercial employment lands, we're talking about like a site plan review, permit, conditional use permit. Those are, that, those are the ones that we're trying to dig. What about?
Well, yes, but if you had a single family home in an industrial zone that has just been there since the forties. And then somebody left it for more than a year and wanted to move back in, it would give us the ability to say, sorry, this is an industrial zone.
That would actually be.
Legal non-conforming use?
To actually discontinue. Cause that home that was built in eighteen forties wasn't ever.
Right.
Benefited by the entitlement program. Most of the existing employment in the community pre-exist site plan.
Sure, sure.
So we gotta. What, you know, so those are all of those, single family residential, uh, older pre-existing uses, like ATI didn't go through. For the most part, ATI may have some elements of its campus.
Sure.
That, that, that went through in the modern era. So I, I, I think it's, it's not like everything would be as it is tou- touched by this new one. But I, I mean, I like the idea as far as, um, trying to capture. That this issue is problem of, of codes being outdated and, and, and we, we go through the process. We have conditions of approval. We tailor it to particular use and then. Um, it doesn't go in there, but, but making it a little bit more clear that it's not the same thing as non-conforming uses.
Okay. I hear you.
I guess a non-conforming use is something that is more than just the development standards, aren't there? Like you're hypothetical of a, previously at a home, which was allowed as a use, then it's been rezoned for industrial. That's a non-conforming use, but a home, but a, a business who has, uh. Put it in and they didn't do before landscaping standards. That's not necessarily a non-conforming use. We don't, you know, if it. So that would be, I, I, I think, I think maybe going through some more drafting, we can, we can tease out what we're. Trying to hone in on here. Um, the definition will be a part of that, but, um, on the, the manager authority. I like that concept too. But I, I also think maybe we can do a. Like give them an opportunity. It's pretty common to give them an opportunity to request extensions.
Okay, yeah.
So that as a concept too of like, they know. That it, that, that, that it's, it's not being used, but they're gonna, they're like staying current with us and saying, can I get an extension? That might be a nice way to, to, to do that without having to overly rely on.
Sure.
City manager discretion. So giving this city an opportunity to. To, to grant those, but if we are going to have this kind of carve out for the city manager discretion. We might want to work on filling that, flushing that idea out as to like, what would those circumstances be?
You mean like giving him criteria for the decision that we put in front of him?
Things to take into consideration.
Okay.
You know, um, so during the recession. There was a ton of development that all got like froze and a lot of the communities, they. They, they adopted kind of, you know.
Sure, blanket extensions.
Blanket economic hardship.
Sure.
Ta- I, I don't, you can kind of say, you know, the first one's free kind of concept of like. You know, the first extension will be granted automatically if you give it. If not, then you do that, but you know, show us some of these things so we can kind of build out. That idea to help the decision maker.
Right, right. That they're actually making some effort to keep it current, making, making facade improvements, something, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, just kind of like whatever that drafting problem we're solving.
Okay.
And does a city manager automatically mean or designate or? Does that have to be?
Uh, that's a tough question. I don't know the answer to that.
I think we.
We often put in city manager or designate.
We often do, but I feel like somewhere we also defined that, um, so we can check globally, but I think we usually put it in.
I try to put that in here, I think. I guess we both would decide kind of have a blanket. I think this meeting, I think we need to find it, oh, great. And. City manager shall need.
Oh, yeah, it's here. It's in our definition section. It says a city manager employed by the city council of the city of Millersburg, Oregon. Or his or her designate, so it's baked right into the definition of city manager.
I, I had a question on there.
Sure.
Is there a provision for conflict of interest of the city manager? Meaning that property maybe they.
It's a good question.
Sorry, Alex, I didn't hear.
A, a provision for a conflict of interest for the city manager.
Oh.
Well, the city manager, it.
Might be an ethics issue.
There's a valid conflict, I don't think. The ethics really will arrive and develop whatever the city manager does. Just can't apply on the city manager, so I don't have such a conflict.
And then you would get a designate.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's a good point.
My, my question is. Who takes over if Kevin is sick?
Well, Janelle.
Exactly.
She's a designate?
She doesn't need to be designated as the designee because she is. I mean, I understand what you're getting at. If there's a catastrophe and they're both gone, then whoever, I guess it would be Matt. I mean, there has to be a hierarchy.
Well, what, what, what will be used before though, we will say, there'll be a signature from the city manager. And, you know, on a contract or something, I'll often write in, city manager or designate, but we just have. Uh, because I want to have more than just, you know, I want Kevin, Kevin to override, say, hey, you know, they don't decide.
Sure.
Go ahead. Don't, don't you put down Janelle in lieu of Kevin or something like that?
Well, and we're kind of getting me on this, but um, yeah, I mean, generally. It depends on if it needs, if it can wait, it can wait till it gets back. If, if it can't, then we talk about it and. I go ahead and sign it and depends on the form, you know, how it's written. If I need to write for city manager or for city of Millersburg. It kind of depends on the document in that case.
But my point, my point was that we don't need to really designate designee because it's, it should be understood.
Right, well, and it's codified in the definitions, so we're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other issues? I'll move on. The next one up is, is a little bit of a misnomer because it actually comes from our municipal code, not our land use development code. And we have two codes here in the city. We have the development code, which, which obviously impacts development. And then the municipal code takes care of all the other elements, barking dogs, um, cars parked on the street too long, things like that. And what we're talking about here tonight is um, uh, some, some changes to our tree removal provisions. And those actually won't even come back to you folks to act on. Because the city council changes its own municipal code, that doesn't go through the planning commission, it's not a type four case. It's just something the city council does, but that doesn't mean we didn't want your input on it, which is why we're here talking to you about it today. So, this change um, is going to add some clarification to the reasons why somebody can request a removal. And so it's trying to hone in on that a little bit more to try and uh, honestly make it a little bit harder for people to remove trees. Uh, if they just got tired of them or don't want them there for aesthetic reasons. Which goes back to the point of this chapter for tree removal. It also uh, clarifies that uh, land use permits kind of cover any tree removals you do. What I mean by that is if you've got a field with a few trees in it. And then a land use approval shows a building where those trees were, we will look at the tree removal as part of the land use permit. And when that land use permit comes to you folks, we'll talk about the trees and the tree removal as part of that process as well. And so if we've approved a land use permit that is going to get rid of some of those trees, they don't have to come back and get another tree removal permit. Because if we said no, we would be invalidating the land use approval, which would be awkward. So that's why we're just trying to clarify that this is more of a blanket cover. He's looking at you.
Well, I was just, so.
You must be making faces.
Oh, was I? We, we adopted this section a few years ago. It's not very old.
No, no, it sure isn't.
And I think there's a few things in here, it's my fault, I didn't read this enough ahead of time to give Matt any input. So I think there's a few things that we may need to discuss, like if the trees are causing issues to the sidewalk or road pavement. I would say that might be a reason for removal, so I'd like, we'll discuss a little bit.
I was thinking the same thing.
Little bit more, some of that stuff. But um, I think the main thing that the tree removal permit does for us and, which is why we adopted this section in the first place is. We've had issues where people, I'm going to do a subdivision or I'm going to do some sort of land use, so I'm going to go cut all the trees down ahead of time. So when I go to do my land use, there's nothing there for them to approve or not approve. So we put this into place.
I remember that.
So that there would be a requirement for them to get permission to cut trees down if they're going to do it ahead of time. But if they're done with the subdivision application, which we've also had, then we get to evaluate them then.
What did, what determines a city tree? I mean, if I plant a tree in my property.
Oh, no, this, this, this applies, no, this applies to your tree as well, on your property.
Well, that's what I'm saying. What, what determines a city? A, a, a tree that the city has the right to say, I can or can't cut it down?
All trees. If they're over a certain.
Certain size.
Certain size. At breast height.
It's trees in the right of way, so plant or strip trees.
Those are our trees, strip trees.
They're, they're trees planted by people though, the developer or individual people. But yes, those have regulations because they're in the right of way. Um, well, what you can plant and removal, um, although we haven't. There are probably a lot have been removed that, without any, you know.
Yeah.
Repercussions. Um, and then when this was adopted, it was trees over a certain size were required a permit to remove. And that's regardless of where they are in the city, uh, even on private property. So there was discussion at council about whether that's right or wrong, but this was also happening at a time when someone went and cut down some huge. Large old oak trees and there was a lot of outcry over this, so they felt that that was an appropriate. Um, regulation for the city to adopt. It doesn't mean you can't, it means you have to have a good reason, like. You have to have an arborist evaluated, is it diseased, is it, and Matt can go into the, the details in here when you can and can't. But um, that's the background.
So, in my front yard, I've got a maple tree, the roots are growing up through. And mowing is getting to be challenging. So if I decide to remove that tree, I can't just.
It depends on the size. Six feet diameter is the rule.
No, no, six, six and a half circumference, twenty-four inch diameter.
Gotcha.
So a bit smaller than that, I can legally take it.
You don't need a permit.
You don't need a permit for it, right? Yeah.
So you're just protecting old growth?
Large trees. Yeah.
So, I think Janelle hit on this a little bit, the replacement of pavement or the cracking of sidewalk. That is not a unique circumstance to remove a tree? I mean, that seems really hazardous.
Like I said, I think we need a little more discussion on this. Um, there are definitely situations where we should remove trees that are causing issues. And replant them with something that.
Well, that's segue into the next change we're proposing.
Well, they probably weren't authorized trees anyway.
Well, from years ago in the city, there was no guidance, you know, on what was appropriate and wasn't appropriate to plant in those strips. Um, we have that now because we've adopted Albany's tree list, but even they'll tell you, I've talked with their arborist, its guidelines, any. Strips that are pretty narrow, any one of those trees on the list could still cause some problems, you know, years and years down the road. It's, it's not a guarantee, but you're, we're going to be in much better shape if we follow recommendations of the list.
Okay, thank you. Right, and that kind of is a segue into the next point uh, that we're adding here, is we've added some mitigation. Because before there wasn't any mitigation and the, the section talks about at the beginning. How its intent is to make sure that the city has a tree canopy. And it didn't really work towards keeping that intent if we're allowing people to just uh, end up with a net deficit of trees. So here we're proposing mitigation. So if you take a tree down, you have to plant a tree, that kind of thing. That way the tree cover in the city stays consistent.
So are you saying the tree removal? Section seven point three, is this, is this part of the land use development code?
No, sir. Municipal code. So the folks won't be acting on it? It goes straight to the city council?
We're just curious.
Yeah.
So. Someone comes in and they're, they're asking for tree removal permit. You're applying this criteria. We're not noticing, we're not doing, this is a land use decision.
Correct. And I think we probably need to have some more discussion on, on that at staff level, on, on the trees. Because part of the mitigation, if I'm reading it correctly, that we need to get lots of chance to talk about. You know, that sounds like it's written for any tree that's taken out. Well, we're only going to know if they come in to get a permit to take a tree out, otherwise they're not. So I'm not sure, we need to clarify whether that's for permitted, only if it's requires a permit or not. So I think there's some things we need to have discussion.
Speaking of that tree, we'll just bring it up as far as this goes. I, we worked on a house up in Salem that. They had a great big fir tree in their front yard and it was owned by the city. And it was starting to lean towards the house. And, long story short, they went down, asked for it to be removed, they were denied, they showed, they had an arborist come out, they showed that the tree was. Could be damaging to the house if anything fell. They still denied the permit, the tree fell, smashed the house.
Oh, no!
And there was a person in the house when it happened, and now there's a huge lawsuit going on. So, I just thought that that means anything or.
Well, our section certainly addresses that. Um, if it's an emergency tree removal, you don't even need to come to us and ask, just take it down. And that, there's a prevent, a provision in here that allows that, for sure. And uh, anytime an arborist report came back and said it's a danger. We approve the permit, remove the tree right away.
Saying we wouldn't do that, I'm not saying this was a story of. Somebody who said you're not cutting trees down, so, but it turned around.
Yeah, you can certainly take it too far, you bet, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
If, if this is just input, yeah, I, I would almost want to know if there would be a provision added for morrescent trees. Um, it, which is a term. Well, it's a term I had to look up.
Oh, okay. I've never heard of it.
E- effectively what it is, is the tree that gets out of its natural cycle.
Okay.
It uh, drops tree, or it drops its leaves and everything in the spring or in the summer.
Oh, interesting.
I've got a few of them over in front of my office in Albany and I've had to deal with them and you have to clean them up at a different time of year and everything, so.
Huh.
I know that can be, um, at least in my head grounds for removal of a tree, but.
And what you call it, mor- morrescent?
M- morrescent, M-A-R-E-S-C-E-N-T. Just the maintenance issue, issues I can cause.
So these are things that we're just jowing on, the city council's going to take care of it, right?
Correct, yeah. Just looking for your input. That way when the city council says to the planning commission, look at this, I can say, yep. Sure did.
I did have one thing that we passed over.
Oh, sure.
To go back to the. Definitions for the daycare facility. The way I read that is that it's not allowed in a duplex.
Oh, well, that, yeah.
And I've never seen, because they're not the owner, okay, I've never seen a duplex that doesn't have at least one renter in it. I mean, it's usually renter, I think maybe that.
I think it's returned to the ADUs, not the, not the.
Oh, it's under daycare facility.
I know, but it's also under, um.
You're saying that by the change we're making here, it's, it's, it's in essence saying that you can't do it in a duplex because most duplex are owned by renters.
Right. So, so maybe that just has to be re- re-massage to where.
Is that something that needs fixed or do we like it that way?
Has to be a resident, not necessarily the owner.
Well, I think it might be better to leave it as homeowner because then the idea is a homeowner would be a lot quicker to repair the uh, facility. And keep it nice in the rest of the community as where renter might not. Might be a rash assumption on my part, but I think that's.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm sure you're right. I mean, some renters don't care about anything. That's just my, my thought on that.
Well, what's the. Give me some more thoughts on that from the rest of the commission, would you?
Yeah, I like the homeowner definition because right of ownership and caring about property.
I mean, you're right, this says renters can't run daycares, that's true.
Okay, so that's, that's the intent, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's what I.
Well, I didn't understand that sentence until I read the um, revised definition of home daycare and ADUs.
Right, but the following.
That was on page eight of forty-four. I mean, maybe there should be a new paragraph, ADUs revised to allow duplexes.
Says an interior attached or detached residential structure that is used in connection with or that is accessory to. A single family dwelling or duplex. So, so the intent is you don't want renters doing that.
Right.
Okay, so, okay, so this would apply to a renter living in a single family home as well?
Correct.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
Matt, wasn't the intent of this because you had a vacant, someone wanted to come in and rent?
Sure, sure.
You could have that with an owner, someone purchasing a property then, so I think you may want to consider how we rewrite that.
Well, this is owner occupied, they have to live there.
But what if they're the owner? And they, not necessarily living there, but they're.
Well, then they wouldn't meet this definition because they're not living there, it's not owner occupied, they have to be living in the building to run a daycare from it.
Then why didn't, it could be either owner or renter occupied.
Well, I think the idea is we don't want renters to run daycares, so we don't want to fix that. If we leave it this way, renters can't do it, and that's a good thing. I think, I mean, that's just my thought, I'm happy to change that if it's.
Are we assuming that the renter is kind of a deadbeat, I mean? It might be, I mean.
It's casting some dispersions, yes.
Okay, alright, well, I just don't want to, you know, there might be some, somebody might bring something up about that, just. A renter wants to run, I mean. In times nowadays, a lot of people are technically doing childcare or whatever, but they're not licensed. They're just doing childcare because they need the money.
Well, some degree of childcare is allowed regardless. As you can see here, daycare facility means that you're turning it into a real money generating business. It's a three or more, I think. In which commonly receive three or more children for the purposes of being given care. I said, once you cross over three, then you're a facility.
I think we should probably have some more discussion on, because I think there are a number of homes here in the city that are leased. And we may very well have people that are in leased or rented structures that are providing daycare out of them. So.
I was just trying to look out for the dirty business guy who rented one room to a eighteen year old who had nothing to do with the business whatsoever, learns in college and now they're running a daycare out of, on. Because that, nobody would be there to care for the buil- the facility.
I think we should take a look at what the state's requirements are. I don't think the state would allow someone to be licensed and operate that way. So.
Well, there's a difference between the home daycare and a daycare facility.
Totally. In a commercial uh, environment, it's very different, yeah. Totally, in a commercial environment, very different, yeah.
Well, and then the difference between authorized and, I mean, yeah.
Right, right.
State cares, right, there's people that'll do it anyway, so.
For sure. Yeah, and if when they do that, they don't just get in trouble with us, they get in trouble with the state, because the state has a whole different branch that looks over those kind of things as well.
Okay, let's go on.
Okay, you got it. Next up is adding some clarification to our land division section, our code, when it was written four years ago, it's it's clear now. That our subdivision section was really written with residential subdivisions in mind. It doesn't really make any kind of distinction between residential and commercial and the needs for a residential and industrial or commercial divisions are slightly different. And so what we've done is we've added changes to this section to clarify which of the rules apply to residential only. Which of them apply to industrial or commercial only, and then which ones apply to all subdivisions. And so it's removed some of the things like the ends of cul-de-sacs have to have sidewalks that come out and connect. Because an industrial subdivision wouldn't have a cul-de-sac like that, and so that wouldn't necessarily make sense, it also says that they have to be. Built in a way that people can walk easily to commercial centers, well, if it's a commercial center. It's supposed to walk to itself, so it didn't really work, and so we've kind of diced that up a little bit and made it a little bit more clear. We've also added the ability, because this wasn't really spoken to before and it's fairly common. We've added a shopping center or industrial center subdivision ability. Now, what that means, here, take a look at this image up here, I tried to highlight in blue what I'm talking about. Somebody could build this project and then decide that they want to sell the front building to one person and then the other front building to a different person. Well, in order to do that, they would want to make a subdivision that carved out nothing but the footprint of that building. And then left all the parking area in common ownership of that building. And our code didn't really, didn't not allow that, but it didn't speak to it either, because they would have setback issues then, obviously. If the, if the property limit was the footprint of the building, how do you meet setbacks, becomes a problem. So we've clarified that now, you see this a lot with shopping centers where they'll have a grocery store and some other, you know, other businesses in the shopping center. And they wanna sell the grocery store footprint to the grocery store company and the Carl's Jr. footprint to the Hardee's company and that kind of thing, they wanna sell those buildings so they can be owned in fee title. By those companies and it, it gets confusing because there are parking requirements, if those parking requirements are on the property, where is the property allowed? Well, this clarifies all that and says you're allowed to make a lot. The footprint of the building as long as the parking is in some kind of easement or common ownership, and so we've added that that wasn't there before. So, any questions on that one? Okay, I'll move on to the next one. Of course, every time we talk about code changes, we always seem to throw some changes to accessory dwelling units in there, we can't ever seem to leave this section alone, we change it all the time. So this change proposing some clarification and some new ideas. And the first thing I wanted to touch on is we wanted to clarify the relationship between detached garages and ADUs. This is something that we've been implementing at a policy level, but it wasn't really written in the code. And so we're really just codifying a policy we've been using for quite some time, but what this is saying is, is if you have a detached garage, it's treated as an accessory structure. And then if you built an ADU, that's treated as an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, sorry, I'm using acronyms, I shouldn't be doing that, I apologize, accessory dwelling unit.
Is that like a granny flat?
Yes, yes, exactly right, and so this is saying you can even put those together and put a garage on an accessory dwelling unit, a granny flat, and that's allowed. But the garage part of it would count as just an accessory structure and there's a different set of rules for accessory structures than there are for accessory dwelling units. And so this just really clarifies the relationship between those, it doesn't say you can't do it, not by any stretch, but it just clarifies where the rules for that comes from. We're also proposing to increase the maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit, sort of, and we're gonna talk about this right now. When we first adopted the ADU rules section, we were doing so because the state was forcing us to, we were at the end of a bully club from the state. And so one of the things the state let us do was regulate the maximum size. And I think part of our anger about what the state was doing was manifested in us making a really small maximum size for accessory dwelling units. Right now, our code says you can't go over six hundred and fifty square feet. But since the dust has settled a little bit and we've been implementing the ADU policies we have, first, we haven't seen that many people requesting them, they're not nearly as popular as I think we thought they were gonna be. And second, a lot of the people who have come to us have expressed some concern with the size, they think the size is too strict. And really does limit what they can or can't do with their property. And on top of that, when we updated our our comprehensive plan fairly recently, we just updated a new housing element. To our comprehensive plan, the section that really regulates at the comp plan level, how we do housing. In there, when we went out for public input, we received quite a few comments from people that we needed to really look at the size of our accessory dwelling units. Because it was so small that it was draconian in preventing actual new housing from coming in, so we wrote a policy. In our new housing element that said we're gonna revisit this, it didn't put handcuffs on us, it didn't say we had to change it, it just said we're gonna revisit it, well, that's us doing this right now, we're revisiting it. And so what we're basically proposing at this, oh, also, I wanted to, I included this table here, which was just a quick survey I did of the surrounding cities. So you can see nine hundred square feet seems to be a popular sweet spot for a lot of the cities around us, some people deviate from that a little bit, of course. But that's where we sit with a lot of the cities that surround us. So what we're doing now, and it was actually Kevin's idea, is we're kind of implementing or proposing sort of a sliding scale, and I put that up here on the screen. And what it says here is if you want an additional, the minimum size is still six hundred and fifty square feet, done. But if your property is bigger, then we're gonna let you build an ADU that's a little bit bigger. And so for every additional one hundred square feet of a, I'm sorry, every one thousand square feet of lot size you have. Over eleven thousand square feet, you're allowed to have another hundred feet of ADU. We've put a maximum on that, again, that's kind of an arbitrary maximum of nine hundred square feet, so if you have a five acre lot, you can, you still can't have an ADU over nine hundred square feet. That's something we just picked and we can certainly talk about it and see what you folks think, but this would let people build a little bit bigger if their lot was a little bit bigger. And so we felt that was appropriate, but we wanted some thoughts from all of you folks on that.
I think if you start adding square footage, you're getting into a whole different area and it beats the purpose of the ADU perhaps. So I, I agree with what you have here.
This, by the way, the sliding scale isn't completely original or brand new, it's actually mirrored from our accessory structure section. So if you wanna build a shop, everybody in Millersburg wants to build a shop, if you wanna build a shop, we have a sliding scale. There's a maximum of twelve hundred square feet, you can't build bigger than that unless your property is bigger than you get an extra, it's the exact same language. You get an extra hundred square feet of building for every thousand square feet of lot space you have, so we're really just mirroring. The little brother of ADUs, which is the accessory structure section and just making them consistent with each other, that's where that came from, although the maximums are different, obviously.
So most subdivisions would, would still be six fifty, with the lot sizes or.
Most accessory dwelling units?
No, subdivisions.
Oh, because they have ten thousand square foot lots, yeah, you would still be capped at six hundred and fifty, yeah, that's correct. Because you're not, your lot's not over eleven thousand, yeah, that's where it really starts letting you climb to go higher. Any thoughts on that? I'm seeing lots of facial expressions, but nobody reaching for the microphone.
The house that I rented, uh, before I bought a house, it was six hundred and fifty square feet, so.
Oh, my.
You know, a lot of these.
Timing, yeah.
You know, a lot of people have said six hundred and fifty square feet's too, too small for my grandma, I can't even put her in a house that small. And people have wanted to bring on manufactured homes as ADUs and they can't find one smaller than six hundred and fifty square feet. And so, it's funny, when we wrote this section, we added a floor to, two hundred and fifty square feet. You can't go smaller than two hundred and fifty square feet, well, I've never heard anybody complain about that part, just the the maximum size. So everybody thinks the sliding scale works okay, nine hundred square feet's the right number for the maximum?
Do any of the others have a sliding scale?
Yeah, you can see Albany up there, no more than half the size of the primary structure excluding garage, but they put a cap of nine hundred square feet, so there's a sliding scale, sweet home.
They don't have a minimum.
No, no, I don't think.
They have a minimum, but they don't have a, a set. Like we have six fifty, unless you're over.
Right, right, well, I think most of them just go with a set number, nine hundred square feet is the max, period, regardless of the size of your lot. But some people have some, you see Corvallis is nine hundred or eighty-five percent of the primary structure, whichever's less, of course. So if you have a small house, you can't build an ADU bigger than the small house. If you're living in a nine hundred square foot house, you can't build a nine hundred square foot ADU, they wouldn't let you, because it has to be eighty-five percent of the primary structure. So, yeah, sliding scales are out there, they're common, you know, even in our surrounding communities. Everybody seem to think that's okay, alright? Sounds good, and of course, you'll get another crack at all this stuff, because we're gonna bring it back to you for a full blown hearing at some point. And if you couldn't sleep tonight because you thought you should have said something, we can change it when we come for the hearing too, it's not in stone at that point, it's moving. So the next change is pretty easy to go through, and this was brought up by Janelle, our code uses the word chicken when it should use the word fowl. Because fowl allows different kinds of birds, and so there's only one place that chicken actually shows up in the code, but we're proposing to scratch that word and put in fowl instead, so. I totally didn't mean that, but I'll take it.
It actually came up because we had someone asking if they could keep ducks.
Yeah.
And, and there are differences between the different kinds of fowl and, so there was a fair bit of discussion of what was the intention of the code. Because it was silent on all the other kinds of fowl and, but it, there is a provision for farm animal. There was something that actually allowed them to have an unlimited number of them, that was what we found out, so we said, okay. We don't want an unlimited number of any sort of fowl, turkeys, whatever, so, that, we, we thought that this section should be, should encompass the kinds. If you feel that it should be limited to the kinds of fowl that are allowed, because there is some variation, you know, that could be done here. People will sometimes keep, raise all sorts of birds, so that's where it came from. We don't think people should have an unlimited number of ostriches or different things.
Yeah, that's a good segue to the next part too, which is we didn't think that people should have an unlimited number of tigers either, and so we've fixed the code. Because we were kind of silent on exotic animals, lions and elephants and such, and so now we've come in and said, okay, you can't really have exotic pets. Now, you can't just say that because exotic would be very gray to a lot of people, so what I've tried to do is plug in here. A laundry list of what I thought was a standard pet, it could be a flawed list, we could absolutely change it, read it, let me know what you think. Maybe that's not the best way to zero in on what an exotic pet is, I'm totally open to changing that. Doug already pointed out the guinea pig is misspelled, so I'll fix that, but, and this was just us running around the office asking each other what, what is a standard household pet? We tried putting everything in there that could be a standard household pet, but if this doesn't work, I'm more than happy to change to something else, this was just us kind of spitballing this together. So let me know if you have any thoughts on prohibitions of exotic animals. You want me to prohibit snakes in Millersburg?
There's some, there's some nasty pythons.
Amen, but there's some people who keep pythons as pets too. It's a smaller reptile, so a python technically wouldn't be allowed, depending on somebody's definition of smaller, I suppose. Yeah, we didn't want somebody keeping alligators, this wouldn't allow that.
Yeah, I don't wanna live anywhere where the dinosaurs were allowed.
Alright, sounds like everybody's fairly okay with this, and again, we'll get another crack at it when it comes to you for hearing, if it's still sitting wrong with you. So there, we're talking about street names now and there isn't a lot of information in our code on street names, the way it works is developers get to pitch the names. And we traditionally go over those with the emergency response team, the sheriff's department and and our GIS folks. So we can compare those to names of streets in the entire Lynn County area to make sure we're not being duplicative too much of street names that come up in other communities. What we've done here is we've really just added a proviso that that officially gives the city the chance to veto bad names that don't make sense to us. Something could be inappropriate, could be a person's name from their family, we wanna make sure that. We have the right to say that doesn't really work in our code as it was written, didn't give us any veto rights, well, now we have that, so that's all this is doing. Doesn't even change the process of how they, they pitched them, how they suggest the names. I wanted to make only Star Wars names allowed, but I didn't think you guys would leave that, so took that out, so no Han Solo Street. Got that in minutes, right? Alright, good, 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 alright, so I'm sorry, any issues on that? I didn't see any looking around the room, okay, so moving on to our commercial office design standards, this actually just came up. In the solar project that we did, kinda catty corner here behind Reimers. Is that the code technically said, you can see it up here, I've stricken the sentence, that. Other walls shall incorporate architectural features and landscaping for at least thirty percent of the wall length, well. Really what that meant is that even walls where nobody saw them and they backed up against something else the, the public would never, ever, ever see. Would still be required to put an architectural feature on that wall for at least thirty percent of the facade length, that didn't make any sense to me at all. Because there's a lot of sides of building that will never be seen by human beings, and so I'm just proposing that we bounce that, that sentence, because I don't think that's really pragmatic.
Works for me.
Okay. Going on. When the code was completely redrafted about four years ago, we added a section for the historical zoning overlay primarily to comply with state goal five. Which is historical resources and some other things, and I don't really think we ever planned on using it, so I think everybody. Myself included, kind of glossed over what was added in that section, but now we've had somebody actually come up and propose to use that section. Which has really made me crack it open and figure out how exactly it functions, and there are some areas that need some attention, for sure. Because the section has some holes and it doesn't really work the way I think it should, so we're proposing some changes, first, we wanna change. The historical committee to a historical commission, might not seem like a big change. But we think that makes a lot more sense, because we were uncomfortable with committees making land use decisions, as were commissions making land use decisions makes a lot more sense. So this also assigns a notice requirements to any of the applications people could come in with, we were kind of silent on that, and so that's a problem, because it is a land use decision. We were removing special timing requirements that were specific to historical designations, there's just no need to complicate. Anybody's lives by having separate timing requirements for one land use permit versus another land use permit. So what we've done by taking the next step is we've proposed to add case types to those, so they're working and walking and talking like all the other cases, and we'll go over that in a second. We've also added an appeal path, there was no chance for appeal of any of these kind of historical decisions whatsoever, we've added that in and kept it consistent with the other case types. And then probably most importantly, if you've added the last section here, there are three different kinds of historical commission applications people can make. New designations, demo and moves, and exterior changes, and what we've done is we've assigned those case types now. So what that does is it helps us have noticing requirements, it helps say where they go to bodies that act on them, things like that. Before, it wasn't remotely clear which bodies acted, how they acted, or what the noticing requirements were. So really, this is just making these application types walk and talk like the rest of our application types, just to keep things more clear for us. And so that's what we're proposing in this section. The, the one change we're working on right now, which is adding a historical zoning overlay designation to the Grange. That application came in beforehand, and so none of this would apply to that, I don't think that's a problem, we'll just process the one we have, the way the code is written now as best we can. And this will just apply to future changes, I still don't think we're gonna use this section all that often. But the Grange is proposing a lot of changes, which is one of the reasons they want the designation, because they want access to grant funds. So we could see a lot of facade improvements, we could see a lot of interior improvements, they will be using this section moving forward for sure, so that's the changes.
Cemetery, where, where does that fit in as an historic landmark?
It is currently designated historic landmark here in the city, it's the only historic landmark we have designated with that zoning overlay at this time. The Grange is mentioned in our comprehensive plan, but didn't get an actual zoning overlay designation, we probably should have added it when we redid the code four years ago. At that time, it would've been a whole lot easier to do then, but we didn't, and so now we're kind of fixing that. Any comments on that? Alan, you and I could talk offline, I'm sure you got lots of comments on this. But he actually helped me with the changes we did, I asked the attorney first if it was okay to switch committee to commission, he thought that was a good idea, so that's good news. Moving on, alright. We're going back to street trees now, which is different from our tree removal section, this actually is in our land use code. And our land use code has, it spoke to street trees and it even loos. And our land use code has, it spoke to street trees and it even loosely required street trees. But I thought that there was some clarification that was needed to make it absolutely certain street trees were required. Because if you read the code a certain way and squeaked and looked sideways, you could make an interpretation the street trees weren't even really required. We had a section that talked about what the street trees had to look like and things like that, but it didn't necessarily say they were required. So the change I'm proposing is super simple, but it's very clear. It's saying, street trees are required, period. Now let's talk about the standards. So we're just removing the gray from that. Any concerns or questions on that? Not a big change, but I think it's an important one. Speaking of not a big change, our code didn't have any requirements for skirting on manufactured homes. Our code was completely silent on this. It's been something that a lot of the communities, I'm on an Oregon Planners Network email thing where all the planners talk to each other from all over the state. And there's been a lot of buzz about this recently, and it just really illuminated that we didn't have a requirement for skirting at all. So all I'm doing is proposing to add that. There are a lot of landmines and tripwires in state code when it comes to manufactured homes, a lot. This passes muster, I mean, the attorney could wait and tell me otherwise, but it passes muster as far as I know with all those provisions. Because you really can't make any rules of manufactured homes that you don't have of regular homes. But a requirement to add skirting is making it look like a regular home. So I'm, I think this is going to pass muster with that. It's a small change again, but it's an important one. A lot of the people in the state are pushing to remove this requirement because they think it's prohibiting homes. I think that's absurd. So I'm actually going the opposite way and proposing that we add it instead. Any comments on that one? Onto the next one. So street vacations, I wanted to back up a little bit and talk about what that is because some people might not be familiar with what that even is. A street vacation is when the city has designated a location where a street should be, but it's not built yet. So it's an unbuilt street. You can call them paper streets. That's what we call them on our side frequently. And sometimes those streets don't make sense. And so you need to vacate them and get rid of that paper street. And it doesn't mean you do this with built streets, obviously, because they're already built. But some places where streets are planned to go just don't make much sense. The state does have a process for vacating streets and it works pretty well. But that same state provision allows cities to adopt their own standards if they want. And it's kind of odd, the state doesn't normally do this with their requirements, but here they actually said, if the city adopts its own, then that trumps the state's requirements. We didn't have any requirements for street vacations at all in our code. And so we could have just left this silent and used the state's provisions and everything would be fine. But I think by adopting these provisions, it helps us future-proof ourself against the state making strange and dumb decisions about street vacations. Once we adopt it, it's locked in at a local level and we control it. I think there's some value to that. Also, what we're doing here is largely proposing to mirror the state's system. We're not trying anything new. If you went through the state's requirements and our requirements, they're almost identical in every way. But what it does do is it plugs it into our existing infrastructure permits. It makes it, you can see here on the bottom, it makes it a type four. So that's clear that it comes to planning commission for a recommendation to the city council, and then the city council makes the final decision. The state's process talks about that a little bit too, but it doesn't call it a type four. It doesn't talk about noticing requirements. Well, it does talk about separate noticing requirements, but we've adopted our own noticing requirements here. So that's primarily, you might say, Matt, if the state has these rules, why reinvent the wheel and adopt your own? It's to protect us from the state changing them in the future and to feather them into our existing system much better than the state's requirements do. So any comments on that? It looks like a big change. There's a lot of red letters in here, but it's really just locking in what the state already has now. It's not real different. It might be guilty of being a little bit simpler because the state's code is a little bit strangely worded and try to be a lot more plain Jane with ours. All right, moving on. And I don't know if you had a chance to run through that, but we can certainly change it before we come back for a hearing if part of it didn't sit well with you.
Yeah, I haven't read it. But we, we probably should look at it together.
Sure, sure.
I'd say for this group, a couple of things that we'll be going to cancel is we have some strips of ride away that we're going to be looking to vacate as part of some cleanup of property lines. And we don't anticipate that being controversial in any way, but that got us looking at the standards because we got to follow the process. And that's what drove this, looking at it right now, is that we're, we're needing to follow that process at the moment, and it's going through city council.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's that issue. We'll move on to the next one. And we're almost done. We're getting to the end, guys. We're getting close. Our flag lot section is, is fairly sophisticated, but it doesn't really address setbacks very clearly. We've had a couple of people come to us with some very good questions on where setbacks begin and start and stop for flag lots. Because it's not really clear what the front of a flag lot is or what the back of a flag lot is and how it faces and all those kind of things. So we're not reinventing the wheel with this change, but we're hoping to bring a little bit more clarity to it. And so we're saying setbacks are absolutely still required on a flag lot. You still got to do setbacks. But what it does is it allows the city to designate where the front of the property is. That way it's not automatic because there's really no one size fits all with flag lots for where a front should be or shouldn't be. This gives us a flexibility to, to change where the front is. Now, once you choose where the front is, once the city chooses where the front is, the back becomes opposite the front and the sides become, you know, parallel to that. So it's perpendicular to that. And so it lets us choose and be flexible with where that starts and stops. But that's going to address a lot of the concerns that have come up with flag lot owners here in the city. Any concerns with that one?
I don't like flag lots.
Oh, yeah? Oh, no, no, we still allow flag lots. As a matter of fact, we have a whole section that specifies exactly how they work. And we did add a lot of detail in our code about a project that might have two more lots. Like you're not allowed to make a subdivision like this that would, I'm going to leave my microphone. But if this were a subdivision that continued to have one more lot and use this, you now can't do more than three. We've drawn the line there. So there's a cap on that for sure. You can't do more than three lots with one of these kind of divisions, but it would require, well, our code spells out what it requires. An easement right along there for everybody to share and use, things like that. And then it talks about the size of the flag lot, can't include the access because that's cheating and making it under 10,000. Thank you, Dennis Gunnar, for that one. He was very adamant about that when we did the code. But we still allow them. Any other questions or comments on that one? Okay. Moving on. Okay, now our code featured a lot of exhibits that were written by very gifted, illustrated by very gifted gentlemen who put these together for us. And some of them were flat out wrong and very misleading. And so what we're proposing to do is fix the misleading and incorrect parts of that. I did reach out to the artist and make sure that he was comfortable with this, and he was. He said, it's fine. He just hopes we hire him in the future if we want any more made, but he was fine with us doing the changes. I even showed him the changes we made and he was okay with it. So what we're looking at here is we have the current exhibit on the left and our proposed changes on the right. Some of them are very subtle. So let's look at this one. This is from section 3.15. And why are we doing this? Well, because the setbacks were incorrect. You can see on the one on the left, it says five and 10 foot minimum. That's not correct. We don't have a 10 foot minimum. We have an eight foot, depending on whether it's a two-story structure or not. If it's two stories, it's eight feet. If it's one story, it's five feet. So we had to correct that. Also, this exact exhibit is trying to, is called accessory structure placement. But what they were showing over here wasn't an accessory structure. If your building is connected in any way, even with a breezeway, we consider that part of the primary structure. So this whole illustration was just flat out wrong. So what we did is we removed the breezeway in our revised version. So it's genuinely a detached unit, so the figure makes a lot more sense. Any questions or concerns on that one? It's something we've worked through with our building department time and time again about how that works. And so it's kind of an agreement we have with our building department. I don't think it's written in building code. At least that's what our building official has made clear to me time and time again. But we've addressed this a lot, like sometimes people want to build an accessory structure that's too large. Well, one of the ways around that is attach the building to your house. And now it's no longer an accessory structure. It's part of the primary structure that just happens to be big, and that's allowed, 100% allowed. And we've used that a number of times in this, this jurisdiction, the breezeway attachments.
So that attachment doesn't have to be enclosed, is what you're saying?
Correct. Correct. Yeah. Yep, matter of fact, the building official himself owns a home in the city and used a breezeway on his building to make a bigger shot. It's self-serving perhaps. So this figure is from section 1220, and it's really just trying to explain where zero lot lines work and don't work. That's from our definition section. And you can see the illustration he gave us showed row houses. Now, I don't think he was trying to say row houses are allowed in Millersburg. He was really just trying to make an example of what a zero lot line is, and you can't make that more clearly than by showing row houses. However, row houses aren't allowed in the city of Millersburg, so it's a little bit misleading. So we're proposing to just remove the row house completely and leave the rest the same. That's the only thing we're proposing there. It wasn't allowing them just because it was in our code, but it was very confusing and misleading. So this figure here, again, comes from our accessory dwelling unit section, and there were parts on here that were incorrect as well. This setback location, you can see on the other side, was incorrect, and this setback was incorrect. So in, in a way to address this, we've just simply removed those setbacks. It's just showing a setback is required. Now you can go look in the code to see what that setback really is. I didn't want to embed it on this graphic in case the setback changes in the future. I thought this was a better way to approach it. So we just eliminated it. And then the same thing you see here, this was called detached accessory dwelling is the name of this figure. That's not a detached accessory dwelling. It's an attached dwelling. And so that doesn't work. So all we've done is removed the breezeway from the illustration just to make it crystal clear that it's detached, not attached. Now, you could do that in our city. You could build an ADU that's attached to your primary unit. That's allowed. You can put your ADU in the attic or in the basement. That's allowed. So that wasn't incorrect, but it was misleading on this exact figure, so we just changed it. Any concerns with that one? All right. This is the last figure that we're changing and the last text change that we're talking about doing. This is from our subdivision section, and the figure is called flag lot access. And you would generally not have two structures on a flag lot. I'm not quite sure why the artist decided to put what looks like two homes on one lot of identical size. But again, it's misleading. Could you have two structures? Sure. Could you have an accessory structure or a primary? Absolutely. Could you even have a primary and an ADU? Yeah, you could. But this makes it look like two identical single-family homes could be on a lot, which is not correct. So we figured it was safer to just go ahead and revise the exhibit and change it the way you see here on the right instead. So it's a little bit more clear what a flag lot would actually look like and what the access for a flag lot needs to look like. So any questions on that one? Just some minor clarifications. All right, so now we're going to leave behind the text changes and talk about some map changes that we really want to fold into this one as well. And I almost feel like I should punt the presentation now to Kevin because these are kind of his babies. But there's been a lot of analysis in our city recently on how much industrial space we have. It certainly played into our expansion of our urban growth boundary, which didn't work, and our swap, which didn't work. But the fact of the matter is the city had an awful lot of industrially zoned property that was unbuildable as industrial property. And so it's skewing the stats. It's making it look like we have way more industrial ability than we really do. So we're hoping to change that. And it starts with a few land use changes here. And so what we're proposing to do is take this area here, this is the area, now Kevin, you jump in here anytime you want because again, this is Kevin's baby. But over here on the left, you're seeing the area we're talking about is the old Simpson Timber property. And back when Simpson Timber was there, they were using that lake for log purposes, for storage and to move them around, conveyance. And so it was genuine industrial use. But when Simpson Timber left, they put a use restriction over that property that said it couldn't be used for anything but open space. Well, now it's pretty darn misleading to be calling that industrial when we can't put an industrial project on it. So what we're proposing to do is simply change the zoning designation from general industrial to public facilities instead. It's right next to, it's part of Simpson Park. It's part of Simpson Park, and so it's a public facility for sure. But what that's going to do is take that acreage off of the rolls of our general industrial, so it's not misleading anymore. That's one of the changes we're proposing.
So, yeah, I just, I would add, so Simpson Timber still owns the property, but what they did was they put a conservation easement over it. And then they dedicate, and listed in the conservation easement is the state of Oregon and Albany Parks. So Simpson Park and then the state has property along the river that's part of it, part of it as well. So it has remained. So that actually happened. And what's really interesting and what brought this to our attention, when this came in, when this occurred in 1989, I believe, the previous plant, planning director here actually brought to the planning commission and to council, looking at bringing the 162 acres in. We just had the discussion on here not too long ago that was owned by Willamette Industries. So, and then following that, Willamette Industries also asked the city to bring it in, asked to have their 162 acres brought in. So, so this has been, we have kept zoning inappropriately there, showing general industrial when there's nothing that can be developed there.
Sure, fair. By changing this to public facilities, does that allow public access?
So it's part of, so Simpson Timber still owns the property. So, and they've put the agreement on it. So it's part of, it's identified in Albany's Parks Plan as Simpson Park. So there is public access allowed now. Now, what with it being, what's nice though is with it still being owned by Simpson Timber, it's still private property. So that doesn't change, our zoning wouldn't change that so they can come in and, you know, they can, you know, ask, please to come in and.
How is it accessed?
It's accessed from Talking Waters Gardens off the, and off of South Way.
You park right here and come in and walk through that way as part of Simpson Park? Now, to answer your other question though, does the zoning designation, public facilities mean the public can access it? Heck no. We've got sewer lift stations with public facility designations that we don't let the public into, not about to.
Well, the reason I ask is because I remember the discussion about the concerns when.
Sure, the trail. Yeah, the trail that we just nixed. Yeah. That's right. Okay, you got it. Well, let me move on to the next one because it's very similar in nature. Same thing here. This is property that is currently zoned general industrial. Now, you might say, why did you make this graphic so strange, Matt, and put it way off to the left side? I wanted to give you some context, so I took the graphic all the way out to Concert Road so you could see where the heck we're talking about. Concert Road is right there. Woods is off to the left a little bit, and that's the railroad track. So you, on the other side of the railroad tracks, the city has property down there. And the property that's highlighted here, again, is unbuildable. It's all in the FEMA floodway, which is a very serious restriction to development and couldn't ever be developed based on that alone. But topography also plays into it. It's got a waterway on it, which means we can't do anything with, lots and lots of reasons why that can't be developed. It's not a big piece of property, but it's big enough to make a difference when you're looking at total acreage that we have. So we're proposing to change it. We don't want to get rid of it. We want to keep that property for sure, but in the city. But we want to change the designation to public facilities again, just to make it clear it's not general industrial and can't be built. Any issues there? All right. Moving on. Now, this one wasn't in your packet, so it was kind of a last minute change, but it's also along the same lines. We, we had a meeting with ATI and talked to them about this property. Right now, this property is green and beautiful and has some lakes on it. It's a very tranquil looking piece of property sandwiched between I-5 and Old Salem Road, right across the street from their, their offices there for ATI. ATI owns it. ATI does not plan on developing it. They plan on leaving that there as a buffer of, between the freeway and them, so that people aren't right up next to their use. And it's not causing adjacency issues of any kind. So what we're proposing to do is change it from general industrial to commercial office. Now, that's a little bit different from the other ones we're talking about. But what that's going to do is it's going to take it off of the total amount of general industrial because in our mind, it, it's not a very viable piece of general industrial, especially when the current owner doesn't want to develop it that way. But it puts it into commercial office that, that would help us if the, if the current owner ATI ever wanted to develop it. It would be a use that would be more appropriate along I-5 and next to their administration offices, which were across the street that way to the side. So that, that's a change we're proposing. So that's a change we're proposing as well, and ATI is aware of it, and they've indicated support, I believe. Okay. So we're going to fold that in with these changes as well. Same primary purposes, getting less and less acreage, general industrial. But the smaller we can make that number, it sounds really strange, the smaller we can make the general industrial number, the easier it is for us to grow with general industrial. Because it looks right now like we have a ton of vacant general industrial property, which is a lie. We don't. So we're trying to fix that. And so it's going to be much more clear, next time we need to grow, what the real numbers are and what the real situation is on the ground. So, any concerns on that one? Okay. So the next steps. We're going to retool some of this. We can do another workshop if you want and tell you what we came up with, but it's probably easier and more cost-efficient to just bring it to you again as a hearing item next time we come see you. I'm not sure when that's going to be. We'll see how long it takes to make some of these changes. Maybe we bring it to you sooner rather than later. We'll see. But there is a 35-day notice requirement before a hearing on this, because it is a code change. So it has to be reviewed through the DLCDs process, which has a specific 35-day window for a public hearing notice. Maybe I put likely July 5th on here. I don't think that's likely. I think it might take a little bit longer than that. We'll see. And then it's going to come to you folks for a recommendation to city council, and then off to a city council hearing for adoption. And then if it follows a regular process, it would take 30 days for that ordinance change to take effect. And that's the general concept. None of these changes are on fire. None of these changes are something where I've got a developer at the front counter who has to have this happen before they can develop. None of these need to be done quickly. None of them are emergencies. So if it takes us a little longer to chew on to get back to you, I don't think it's going to hurt anybody. Just putting that out there, so you guys know. But those are the general next steps. And that concludes the workshop that I had for you today. Any other questions or concerns?
No. So we move on to planning updates.
I don't think I have a planning update for you. This has been consuming most of my time here with this. I haven't done any type 1 approvals that I should bring to your attention, or even type 2 approvals I should bring to your attention. Lots of rumors about what's coming in soon. We think there's going to be three or four pretty good-sized land use applications coming soon to you guys. That's exciting, but I tell you that every time I see you, and I don't have any right now, so I'm a little bit boy who cried wolf. But we're hoping to bring some real good, meaty, juicy land use projects to you shortly. Anything else from back there? Okay.
Well, I would add just one thing. So, one of the things that I think a lot of the public isn't aware of,
so when the city was incorporated and when you looked at what, how they set us up as a city in 1974, what the county's intent was at that point, is we're not supposed to be just a, this industrial property wasn't set aside just for Millersburg. We were identified as a regional employment hub because of the two railroads, I-5, and everything there. So, you know, I think that's one of the things to keep in mind. So at the time that the city was incorporated, we had, I think, almost 1,200 acres of heavy, what was considered heavy industrial lands now. And we are actually, what we have seen with the lost, with Talking Waters coming in and a lot of the other things, and then with conservation easement, and OIP is looking at similar thing on their property on the west side as well. We've actually contracted. So we don't even, so if you look at what we have available for industrial lands compared to when the city's first land use plan was adopted, we've seen a contraction, so.
And jobs with it.
Yeah. Yeah, we are actually, again, I think almost 800 jobs less than we were in 1986.
That's right. That's right. And we are looking to correct that. We're looking to bring in some more industrial and keep the high tax value that brings to our citizens and the myriad of benefits that industry brings with those tax dollars, like trails and parks and things like that. So we're looking to correct that and see what we can do by getting more industry. We're not shying away from industry in the slightest. This paper mill?
Yeah. The paper mill, when they closed, they were at 300. So primarily, the ones that we've seen that we, you know, that resulted in a loss, the paper mill, we had, Willamette was pretty good. And I think it's actually closer to, it might be more than that. I'll go back and look. But anyway, Paper Mill was one. They were 300 when they closed. Warehouse's warehouses now, that was custom products, so I think they had like 120. So I think there's like an 80 loss there. Simpson Timber, when they closed, they were around 200 employees on those when that closed. Where Highlight Ward is now, you know, if we go way back, that was another mill there on that parcel and next door. And so I think there was 100 and some jobs when they, when those first, so we've lost. And most, you know, outside of, you know, Sofidel was looking to bring 1,000 jobs in on 162 acres. A lot of these others, we see a lot of larger industries wanting, industries coming in through the state looking for larger parcels in that 150, 200 range, but not even close to the employee count. They're mostly smaller, smaller numbers of employees. So Sofidel was kind of unique in the number of employees and the wages, in the high wages that they would have provided. You know, I would say, you know, we've probably, we've seen coming through in this last year and even in the last six months, we've seen companies come through that could take every bit of property that was developable today in the city. But a lot of it's, we have wetlands or other things that they have to deal with. It takes time to do. I would say we could probably, you know, probably addressing close to 400 acres, which would pretty much take up our remaining industrial lands, and you're probably not talking more than 400 employees. High value, large power users, but not large numbers of employment. So Sofidel was kind of unique in that regard, so.
Thank you. Any other? Then I am going to adjourn this meeting at 7:59.
All right.
Amen, hallelujah.